Good evening, everyone. Tonight is June 3rd at 7:00 PM. This London Derry Town Council meeting. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. We're going to have a moment of silence just for all our town staff that are continuously contributing to our community, for the people that volunteer for this community so that our residents can enjoy the wonderful things that we have. Please be seated. All right, folks. So we're going to move into first order of business on the agenda. It's just an update from the New Hampshire Retirement System. I have the Executive Director Jan Godwin and the Director of Communications Marty Carlin. Is that how you pronounce it?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. If you guys would like to, please come forward and... Good evening. How are you folks doing?
Doing well.
And thank you so much for inviting us.
Thank you for being here. So I understand you guys have a presentation?
We have a handout that you could just receive that Jan and I were going to kind of split off on it. Just as a background, I've been speaking with Cameron. I was looking for sort of a general update.
Okay.
And so I wanted to give you that and use that as a jumping off point for any questions you may have.
Perfect.
With that, I'll turn it over to Jan to get us...
Thank you.
Oh, I may stop standing.
You're sorry.
Okay, yep. So the overview, and this was just some things we put together. This past year has been very busy for NHRS in the sense that we went through a once in 20-year upgrade of our pension administration system, database, everything, which is essentially the brain of the retirement system. So that, we're just kind of coming out of that. It went live in December, and I'm not sure how it actually went with London Derry. Several employers had challenges with it, particularly school employers, adjusting to the new system and some things like that. So that was a huge project that's kind of coming into the cleanup and maintenance phase. So that was a, kept us busy. We launched this project back in 2019. At the same time, we also updated our member and retiree portal, my account, which is a self-service portal with folks can get their own information and benefit amounts and things like that. So those were two huge things going on. On top of that ongoing project, we had some significant statutory changes last year, particularly one bill involving pension benefits for Group One members and when they were, at what age were they reduced after retirement. So that was a lot of, you've got a moving bus that you don't know how to drive yet because they just gave it to us and we're trying to change the tire halfway through. So we've gotten through all of those pieces. One bit of news that we're going to be hitting at the end of this month. We're a July 1 fiscal year organization like most state entities. We're going to have, our retiree payroll is going to exceed $1 billion at the close of this fiscal year and benefits paid out to our retirees. And approximately 80%, 79. something, live in New Hampshire. So our point is, the contributions do come in from members and from taxpayers in the communities, but a lot of that money circulates in-state and supports the economy, allows our retirees to live a reasonable dignified life in retirement, pay their property taxes, go out to eat and such. So the $1 billion for us is sort of an interesting milestone. And then finally, we are, our actuary is just in the completing stages of an experience study on actual experience for the four years ending June 30th of 2023. And the word actuary usually elicits yawns from folks, but this is an important process that we have them do every four years just to make sure our expectations are in line with actual experience in the past few years. And if not, are there reasons that are short-term reasons or long-term reasons and what needs to be changed and adjusted? So typically mortality tends to improve. Although I don't think it's improving at a greater pace in New Hampshire than it had been, things like that. So that is actually going to our Board of Trustees next week to review the recommendations from the actuary on that. That experience study will flow into the valuation that we do every two years, which will ultimately lead to the employer contribution rates for FY '26 and '27. So a lot of big picture pieces going on there.
Thank you, Marty, for getting us started. Now I'll talk about our funding and the progress on our investments. So this past fiscal year that ended June 30, 2023, we had a return of 8.2%, which is very good because our target return is 6.75%. And over the past few periods, the three-year, five-year, 10-year, and 25-year returns have also been very good. They were respectively 9.6%, 7.1%, 7.9%, and 6.5%. And whenever we provide return informations, it's net of fees. It's not the gross returns. And compared to other members in the Calend large, Calend Public Fund large universe, that is other public pension plans that have more than $1 billion in assets, there's about 85 other public pension plans in that universe. And HRS performed better than 2/3rds of its peers in fiscal year 2023 and better than 80% of our peers over the past decade. So that's something that we're very proud of. So far this year, through the end of March for fiscal year '24, our return is 8.1%. And because our investment returns have been solid, the funded ratio of our plan, as you can see in the chart on the bottom part of this page, has been increasing. Last year, at the end of fiscal year 2023, our funded ratio was 67.2%, which was up from the prior year, which was 65.6%.
What does that equate to in dollars?
In dollars, our trust fund assets were $11.5 billion last June, and as of the end of March, they were $12.2 billion.
So how much are we underfunded by?
We are underfunded by about $5.5 billion. And we're on the pathway with the employer contributions to get there.
Thank you.
And 10 years ago, just to give you a bit of perspective, our assets were $7.4 billion. So they've been growing nicely over time. I'll turn things back over to Marty.
We turn over to the page. This is just a paragraph explaining how employer rates are set. There is statutory and constitutional provisions governing that. So the board really doesn't have a lot of leeway in choosing the rate. We have to rely on the actuary to give us the number, and the board then would certify that. The Constitution requires employers to pay those rates. So it's a structure that will ensure that we will get back to full funding over time. Most of that liability that Jan spoke of is scheduled to be paid down by 2039, and then there's going to be sort of a tail after that that will be picking up the rest. So with employer contribution rates, they're set two years out. So right now, London Derry, next month, is going to be entering the FY '25 rate cycle, which are the same as the current rates this year. And then the FY '26, '27 rates are going to be presented to the board this August. And assuming they're certified, then we'll get the message out to the employers to what those rates are. So I know you're starting your budgeting process for next year already. The state starts it. We've tried since Jan's gotten here. She's tried to push up the certification earlier in the summer. We used to do it in September. And what we found is a lot of employers are little bit, planning a little bit longer term and working on their budget over the summer rather than waiting to the fall. So we want to be responsive to that. We won't know what the rates are going to be until, A, the experience study recommendations are acted on and then the numbers are crunched, but just, they look to be favorable in the sense that we're not anticipating any major increases in the employer rates. We saw a big spike in '21, '22 after an experience study for the prior four years. The outlook, it looks stable right now, and it probably shouldn't change.
So now I'll talk a little bit about some ongoing initiatives. Like any other large employer, we are very concerned about cybersecurity and are always working to improve our profile, to maintain the security of our system as well as all the confidential information that our members and retirees have entrusted us with. And we continue to review and adjust as necessary our investment portfolio. We have a new Chief Investment Officer who started in October of 2022, and so he's taking a fresh look at everything.
And then finally, the last section, legislation, something that's near and dear to my heart. I spend a lot of time over at those buildings. There were 14 bills introduced this year, and three have made it through both the House and Senate or are waiting to be enrolled and sent to Governor Sununu. One, two of the bills are specific to Group Two Police and Fire. And once, if presuming those are signed, we'll be sending out messaging both to the membership and to employers about the details of those bills. One is a fairly limited bill that would create a new level of disability benefit for police or firefighter injured by assault with a deadly weapon in the line of duty, as opposed to other types of accidents. So the expectation is those incidents are few and far between, and hopefully the London Derry's never hurt, hit by one of those situations. And then another bill for Group Two Police and Fire, which would slightly increase the benefit calculation for those members who were in the system back in 2011 when the laws were reformed and some benefit accruals were reduced for that cohort of members. There's about 1,600 of them who are still active. That's one of the bills. And the third bill is a very limited $500 payment to members who retired under an accidental job-related disability. So those are the three bills we're tracking this year. And I'm not sure what the governor is going to do with them, but they made it through both chambers. In the handout, I did include the full tracker for this year just for reference. This is a document we update on the website every Friday. So if you ever wanted to check out any time between January and June, what's cooking with NHRS legislation, you can follow that on the website.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the council?
Yes. These bills that you had mentioned, will they potentially be increasing the employer rates for the increased payouts?
Good question. The $500 payment for the retirees will be funded from the general fund, so that no pass along to local employers. The enhanced accidental disability, if you will, or at least sure violent disability, I guess is the title in the statute, because the expectation is that's a very small pool of people. There's not going to be any immediate increase in the employer rates for that. The actuary is going to have to look at the actual experience over the next five or 10 years and see if they need to factor that in. But with 48,000 active members, if tragedy befalls a couple of them in the rounding, that's not going to change your rates. The Group Two bill for the 1,600 or so members, the state is pre-funding the unfunded liability portion of that.
Oh, good.
Basically, it's like the folks who were impacted by it, their rates were set on the assumption that they were getting what they're getting now, and now they're going to be getting more. So that's the backfill, if you will.
How much of an increase would they be getting?
Twenty-six million. On a per-person basis, it's going to depend on how many years they had in 2011.
Of course.
It's going to increase their pension anywhere from, I would say, 1% to 4%, annual lifetime pension. So it's a fairly modest increase, but again, it's a lifetime benefit, so.
What's the total dollar value you have?
Yeah, the unfunded piece was 26 million that the state's going to fund.
Great.
And there is a moderate increase in what's called the normal cost of the pension rate. It's about 12 basis points of the rate, or something in that range. So that's a cost that will sort of work its way back out of the rates once all these people sort of retire and finish their careers. So it's not, it's a multi-year increase, but it's not a forever increase unless, again, they change benefits for all the groups going forward.
And is that specifically to just police and fire or also educators as well?
No, just police and fire.
Just police and fire.
The way their formula, their benefit formulas are calculated, they've always historically been different in NHRS in terms of the Group Two uses a multiplier. And it had been, for every year you worked, it's 2.5% of your average final salary. And then it was lowered for those, for a group of people who were in the system but not vested when the law changed in '11, and their multiplier is either 2.4, 2.3, 2.2, or 2.1. And what this bill does is increases, for every year they work, after year 15, it goes back up to 2.5. So if somebody works a 30-year career, their pension is going to be bigger. And if somebody leaves it, the minimum, the increase doesn't kick in until they're pretty far along the path.
Great.
Anyone else from the council? Well, that legislature is definitely working hard on this. I mean, obviously by your tracker. There have been a lot of bills proposed, House bills, Senate bills and such, and just continue to encourage them to keep an eye on this. So, all right. Well, thank you very much, both, Mr. Town Manager, Madam Assistant Town Manager. Do you guys have anything you'd like to add?
No, just a thanks to you for being here and for the informative presentation.
Nice to see it's going in the right direction.
Yeah. Clearly, your new fund manager is doing a good job.
Yes.
Thank you both for your time.
Thank you for the opportunity to come down.
Yes, thank you for the invitation.
All right, folks.
I have a quick update on the Arcadia Health stuff.
Yes, please.
So Arcadia Health, as I think I've shared with you in the last meeting, they are working with their legal department. I was informed by our attorney, Megan Carrier, that she has not received the MOU agreement yet, and they're on the clock. So July 31st, they've got to get it done. At the last meeting, we also had a discussion about Fish and Game and about their project. After we looked into it and everything, it seems that the ball was dropped by the prior planning group that was here. This was approved back in 2020 and in 2021, and there's no other thing to say other than they missed it. It happens, humans make mistakes, and you have to go back and you have to fix them. So as of right now, our attorney, Megan Carrier, is speaking with their attorney, Pat Pansiarco. I know that they are working diligently on two items. One is whether or not the driveway is going to be grandfathered or not. I think they're having that discussion. Or if Attorney Pansiarco is going to go down the path of a variance, and then the other piece for the expansion of the building and the variance on that. She is working to get her paperwork in by June 7th. Our attorney is working with the planning department to expedite this and to move it up on the agenda. I have shared with our attorney and with Fish and Game that I plan on attending the meeting and speaking on their behalf, in favor of the project. So that's what I know from what I know about the legal updates I got.
All right, thank you. Folks, we're going to open up public comment. We have a presentation from the Concerts of the Common and the Arts Council. So at this time, I'd like to welcome you three up. Or two.
Larry, you'll probably sit behind. We need support. We'll call him back.
I think you guys can handle it quite well. So good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for having us.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for your continued service to our community.
Oh, absolutely.
If you don't mind, if you wouldn't, please introduce yourselves to the rest of the council and the public. And I believe you have a presentation as well.
Yeah, Stephen Lays, my wife Julie. We're here with our partner in crime, Larry, Larry Casey.
Hey, Larry.
And so we just wanted to give you a kind of a brief overview of where the concerts sit this year, where we're at. This will be our 24th year of concerts, and the mission that we bring with that is community, great music, and summer evenings. Just highlight some of last year's successes. The attendance, the average outdoor attendance was over 590 people, and that was up from 504 the year before. And then we'd also like to start by thanking so many people in the community that really make this happen. It includes the town, town administration, the school district, the police, the fire, the DPW, London Derry Alert, the churches around the common, vendors and exhibitors. And we're really blessed with just a number of wonderful volunteers, and without all of those moving pieces, it's just wouldn't happen. So we really appreciate that. And then we have free weekly raffle with prizes that have been generously donated every week from just concert attendees, which is, it's just amazing. So one thing that we've calculated for the, that Larry has calculated, for the grant that we apply for through New Hampshire, is the value of the concerts, just in monetary value. If you look at some of the commercial vendors surrounding, in the surrounding area, the Tupelo or the Palace, the average ticket is about $29. And so if you look at the value of the 12 concert season that we have this year for a family of four, it's almost $1,400. So we think that that alone provides an opportunity for people to be able to enjoy concerts and community with their family and friends. Another thing that we do is we have, we communicate with our followers really through Facebook, and we now have over 3,040 followers. Another new thing we're doing this year is we're partnering with Leech Library to offer a specific concerts in the common for kids, and that's going to be on a Saturday afternoon, so easier for families with young kids. It's going to be shorter. It's only an hour instead of an hour and a half. And based on the reaction that we've had on Facebook so far, if the weather's good, it's always up to the weather, we should have a very good crowd. People seem to be enthusiastic about that, so maybe we'll be doing more. And then we do an audience survey the last couple concerts of the year. And we've always wanted, and one thing we've always wanted to do with that is to encourage community. And we see that the response in the survey, people are looking for connecting with other members of the community, supporting the community. And so one thing that we thought of to do that is we're going to have a line dance lesson before one of our country artists concerts on August 7th.
Completely free, before the concert.
So that should be a lot of fun. That'll be something new and hopefully get people involved and get an opportunity to meet their neighbors. We also, starting this year, we're having a specific volunteer program. We had a donation from the great New Hampshire restaurants, which is Copper Door, Cactus Jack's, T-Bones. They gave us a number of $25 gift cards that we're going to give to volunteers that help for four concerts, and then also a Concerts in the Common t-shirt. And another new thing that we're doing is, from the survey, people had requested more food trucks. We really can't support more food trucks with the events, the size of the event. But what we came up with was working with local restaurants, Jersey Mike's and Giovanni's, to support a food delivery program. And what that means is that if they order food and say, please deliver it to the common, if they order it by a specific time, we're setting up a table, a food delivery pickup, so that they will have all the deliveries at one time. They won't have, Giovanni's wants to, they're just doing it ad hoc, as kind of as they have been. But Jersey Mike's, they'll be doing it where they deliver everything all around 6:30. So people will just be able to order ahead, say, deliver it to the common and pick it up there. And so we're hoping that that will give people more of a variety of different foods. That said, we still, we want to really thank the food truck that we have, One Happy Clam, because they've just been with us for years now, and they're just fantastic people and fantastic food. We really love having them. And then we also have Timeless Treats, an ice cream truck, and then, of course, Colonel's for College with popcorn and lemonade. And that combination has worked out really well. To just touch on funding, funding is approximately 30% from the town, 20% from the New Hampshire Council of the Arts, the Arts for Community Engagement Grant that we apply for, and then also, and then 50% from local business sponsors. We also pay for the old Home Bay Concert now, which we took on a few years ago. This year, we have 36 sponsors, and that's up from 30 last year. And one thing that we're going to be, that we're highlighting in the program that we handed out earlier is how long many of our sponsors have been supporting the concerts, because some of them, one in particular has been with us from the beginning, and others have been with us for many, many years. And so we really would like to highlight their support. And then we have the schedule kind of going on screens here. We have some great artists this year. Jessica Lynn is going to be in a couple of weeks. I worked with her for literally months to try to get that date to work. So she's going to be fantastic, I think. Another, Neurotic Gumbo, we've got tons of activity on Facebook for them. We have Delta Generators, Brian Templeton, playing harmonica here. I used to live in London Derry, and he's just a blues giant in the Milwaukee area. Not Milwaukee, sorry, Boston area. I'm from Milwaukee. Haven't been there for a while. Jocelyn and Sweet Impression, they're going to be new, and she just sings like crazy. Just, they played at Red Rocks, and they're really good. Couch is going to be a really big night, I think. The response with that group, their only reason we have them is because they're out of Boston, and it's on a Wednesday. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to touch these people.
Yeah, tour nationally.
Just Brian Mase, I mean, he's been called Rock Royalty for Boston. He's just awesome, and his wife, Mary Beth. So that should be a great.
Always a favorite.
Always a favorite. And then this is the new concert, Mr. Aaron Band. It's a specific kids band, and that should be fun.
As Stephen said earlier, we're partnering with the library on this, and we're helping them fund it as well.
And that's on a Saturday as well?
On a Saturday, yeah.
And it's one hour, as you mentioned earlier?
Right, yeah. So hopefully it'll be kid's size. East Coast Soul is a band that, a lot of people from Berkeley in the band. And so they'll be new for us, but our sound man actually knows them. And so they should be a lot of fun, really good. Chicago Total Acus, we tried to, we were going to book, we booked them for pandemic year, so that fell through. And we're having them back this year.
For John.
So that should be fun.
So I like Chicago.
Yeah, I grew up with them too. Martin and Kelly, we've had these folks, this will be the fourth year back, I think.
At least, maybe five.
And he just plays like crazy, and she sings like an angel, so.
And this is the seventh is the same date of the Countryline Dancing lessons.
Yeah, they, Martin and Kelly actually suggested it to us a couple of years ago, and we've actually been able to make it happen for this year.
Very cool.
So it'll be before their show.
Are the instructors local?
Yes, Derry.
Awesome, very good. Thank you.
And then to end the year, again, we ended last year and had a gigantic crowd. Studio Two, which is a Beatles tribute band, and that always goes over big.
We counted 905 that night.
Wow.
Wow.
Can you go in a little bit of detail on your band selection process? And from my understanding, there are some, obviously, there's some repeat bands. There are also some new ones, but the process starts months and even, as you mentioned, years prior, so.
We booked Couch last September. Yeah, January was Jessica Lynn.
Yeah, yeah, January, and that was late January, and I'd been working with them for end of November, I think, trying to book them. So how do we pick them out? So it's recommendations, people that have seen shows, and they'll tell us about somebody, and we'll kind of check them out. It's a lot easier now than the early days when we'd be asking bands for CDs and things like that. What we look for is Blue Sky, they have a website. We like it if they actually have their own songs, because that means they're serious, they're into it. We don't just want a bar band. So that's a plus. It's not a requirement. But then covers also, because we don't want just all songs that people don't know. So we kind of get a mix of that. We look for videos, YouTube videos of them performing it live rather than just music videos, because anybody can, well, it's much easier to produce a song than it is to play live. And so we watch for that. And that's one thing with Couch was they're just, they're awesome live. We actually went to see them.
You look for musicianship, for sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's number one.
Yeah.
Just, you know, yeah, it's nuanced, right? We look for genres that we know our crowd would enjoy, like Beatles, Chicago. You know, those are, these are songs that folks know.
But we also try to push them a little bit, too. Like with Couch is going to be, they're going to be playing more covers than normally, they said. Because we went and talked to them and tell them just kind of what they're getting into, make sure they know. They'd already agreed, but I just wanted, no surprises here, right? So, you know, our green room is a porta potty, so. We gotta make sure that they're aware of that upfront. Yeah, it's clean, it's clean.
But the process, my point is, the process is very involved, and just the time that you both spend into, again, back to, as I said during our moment of silence, the volunteers, you, you folks, that you contribute to the community is greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Yeah, it does, it definitely does take some time, and then once we've picked out the, the artist, then you've got to fit him into the schedule, and it gets to be a puzzle piece.
A lot of logistics.
We've had to shuffle some things around before.
Yeah, that's never fun.
Speaking to, taking recommendations from people that you know, my parents made a recommendation to you guys for last summer, from the prior summer that they went to go see a show out in Western Mass, and you guys were able to connect with them, and we'll likely be able to get them here, and they were a fantastic show.
Yeah, we, we, we had her booked, and then they had to back out because of another commitment.
Well, no, it was because we were the only one in this area.
Oh, okay. Well, that makes sense.
They could have done it, but it would cost a fortune to have them.
She put on an amazing show last year.
Yeah, it was great.
Absolutely. So this, yeah, so hopefully next year. Yeah, no, she was one of the, she might have been the first one that we booked, and then had to unbook, but, yeah.
Working with the Arts Council, I've already been in touch with, through, in concert with the town manager's office, to make sure that Alert, Police and Fire are all ready to go, since we have a lot of white tops at the, at the concerts and everything, it's always good to know that, you know, medical assistance is nearby, and that, you know, and for Alert was, has been great. I mean, they really have been.
Fantastic, yeah.
And they only got involved but, a couple of years ago, but they have been unbelievable.
Yeah.
And then Police has been great from the standpoint of they just, they show up when they need to, and they, they help us out when it gets dark, and.
Yeah, and the light that the.
We've got to make sure all the lights are working, Tristan. All the lights have to be working and everything for the, for the intersections. If we just remind Fire of that, they'll take care of it.
That was a huge boost last year. I don't know how we did in the past, honestly. It's much safer having those, to light up those cross, crossing areas.
Hey, it was you guys that brought it to our attention. I mean, it was actually Larry who talked to me and said that, you know what, as the clock is changing, it's getting darker, none of us thought of it. And, you know, and we have the portable lights, and that worked out great.
Yeah, oh, fantastic.
Anything else from the council?
I'd like to thank Mike, too, because he's, he's our lawyer.
Yeah.
Helps us, helps us with the contracts, which we didn't have contracts in the past, as, you know, as it gets more popular, and we're able to afford little, you know, more popular bands, they have contracts, whereas before it was just email. You know, you're playing this date, and here's what we're paying, and that was okay, but now, and so, you know, we get this three or four page thing, and.
You can't, you can't read it.
Mr. Chair, I am, I am very good at reviewing contracts, but just to correct one thing they said, not everybody can produce a music video. You certainly wouldn't want to hear me do it.
Well, we'll keep that in mind when you actually ask us to perform.
Well, there's always a first for everyone. It'll probably be the last.
Well, hope to see you all at a concert.
Yeah, absolutely.
Most definitely will.
Thank you for all that you do. Thank you.
We have so much fun, so please come.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, everyone, we're going to move on on our agenda. First part of public comment is the discussion on the Petition Warren Article Number 20, which is to amend Lenand Derry Municipal Code Title I. General Code One, Section 8.13 Alpha, requiring recording of official town meetings and scheduling of meetings at a time most convenient to the general public. Is the petitioner here? Would you like to come up, please? Good evening.
Good evening. Deb Paul, 118 Hardy Road. Before I speak, I want to know, are we, are you going to do what you did last town council meeting, where you get to speak on this and then speak again, or just this?
Yes. Thank you for the clarification.
So we're going to do it the way you did it? Okay. Because last time I had questions, but I couldn't get up a second time and say something, so I had to wait till this time to ask the questions.
Questions about the deliberative, or I'm sorry, the.
Well, when I came, I, I had asked for the thing for opening up the charter, remember? And I didn't have it, so I had to go back there, and I didn't have time to read it and run back up, and, and you don't allow people to come back up a second time, so I have to wait.
Well, the charter was a separate subject.
I know, but I couldn't come back up, because I had already been up and I asked where the charter thing was, and then when you told me it was back there, I didn't have time from there to there to read it.
I understand.
So I wanted to be sure, because I had questions about it. So I'm here, I'm the petitioner. I've had people, you know, who wanted to be involved at one time, like in the pool committee, or wanted to go to the traffic safety meeting, and because the pool committee we happened to get together at like 3:00 in the afternoon, this one is at 5:30. Because of time, people weren't able to make them, and I, and I, I agreed that it's difficult when you have a family and you're trying to work, and you're trying to get to these meetings, and a lot of these meetings weren't recorded, so you can't figure out what's going on. And hence why I did this. Like I said the last time, I had put them all together at 1:00, and someone told me to break them out, it might be better, so I did. I will say that, you know, all five of the petitions that I had put up were overwhelmingly voted in for you guys to take action on, and I am hoping that you will move forward to this. If you have any questions as to why I did it, or why you don't think, or you want it, don't think it's a good idea, or why it's impossible to, to do, I'd be more than happy to give some input and my perception as to why.
Thank you. Is there anything, and I know you had presented, but is there anything from the general public that would, they'd like to add to this?
Oh, you want me to leave? Okay.
I don't want you to leave, your time's not up.
Well, in case somebody has to say something, I don't know, I'll sit down.
Anyone else from the general public? Good evening.
Good evening. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see all of you. Martha Smith, 38 Chester Drive. My question is, I know that these questions have come up a couple of times now at town council meetings, and Mr. Farrell had suggested that we open up the charter, or if we want to make these changes, to open up the charter. And I've been at prior town council meetings, that there have been some amendments that the council can just make to the charter. And so I want to understand what makes it a significant change to open up the charter, to make this, you know, a very long process? Some of these issues seem kind of simple to me. So my question to the council is, if you could tell me and the public, why, opening up the charter, why does it have to be a big, long thing that we, you get a lot of signatures for and all of that? But if the council decides that it's a change that can be made, they can make changes. Can you explain the difference to me?
Technically, the council cannot make changes. The council has to go through a very similar process, even if it's an amendment, to be able to go through the state, and it has to go to the voters. The council does not have the authority to make changes to the charter, just to be clear.
Okay.
Mr. Malaguti put out a memo that, you know, stated what the process is. It really is more, and he can correct me if it, you know, because he's the one that has the law degree, is that depending on what you do, depends on what the process looks like. If it's a minor change that can go to the voters, that can be done. If it's half a dozen changes, it's up to the state, not up to the council. But it's up to the state what we do. We don't get to make that decision.
And that memo is attached?
Have I got that right?
That, that's exactly right. Yes.
Go ahead, please.
Yes, that's exactly right, and to Counselor Favers' point that I think he was about to make, or started to make, yes, the memo is attached to the minutes and/or the agenda from last meeting. I'm happy to supply it to you, but.
Okay, thank you.
Just to summarize, Counselor Farrell is exactly right. There's a difference in state statute between a charter revision and a charter amendment. A charter revision is a change in the, in the form of government, in the whole form of government. And Counselor Farrell is correct that there are certain changes to our charter that you can't make without changing our form of government. And I would give as an example, something that seems like a fairly straightforward minor change, like the adoption of an official budget committee, that really, I think, the state would consider a change in our form of government, because right now, the legislative body is the town council, and the budget is approved by the, by the voters at the town meeting, and the, the default budget is really tracked and prepared by the finance department. So having the, an elected official budget committee do that, and then as we go through the budget process, to have the budget committees' changes have the force of law, that would be a change in, in the form of government, I, I believe.
And as far as Counselor.
I can understand that. I can understand that example, and that's a good one. How does this fit in? This particular one?
Just to correct one thing, as far as Counselor Farrell is concerned, I have no objection to opening the charter. I'm not suggesting we do anything. I just say I personally, as one person, has no objection.
No, I understand that, too.
And so as, on the other side, an example, and I'll, and I'll get to this one in a second, an example such as the last charter amendment, well, I guess, let's start with the charter amendment that was most recently proposed, was a change in the method of installing the town treasurer. That doesn't change enough about our town form of government to constitute a form, a change in the form of government. Therefore, it's a charter amendment. You don't need a charter commission that's elected, that needs to prepare a report. It can be done, like Counselor Farrell said, the council can recommend it, but the people ultimately have to vote on it.
And the state has to say we're okay to do it.
And that's exactly right. So whether we're talking about a charter amendment or a charter revision, whatever the actual change is, it really goes through the same process.
Has to be voted on.
There's extra process that's entailed with a, a charter revision, which is the changing the form of government, and that is, you need a, the election of a charter commission, a charter report, maybe there's a minority report, but those changes need to be vetted legally. And that's the, that's the same process that we go through here when there's a charter amendment. So the, the process roughly, you know, let's, let's assume that we're talking about a charter amendment entails a, a notice by newspaper publication, a public hearing. Assuming that the, the town council believes that a, a proposed change in the town charter should be moved forward, the change goes to three different state agencies, the Department of Revenue Administration, the Department of State, and the Attorney General's Office. They have a period of time to review it. Assuming that they don't object to it, it comes back to the town council, and then the town council has seven days to decide, do we, is, are we going to move it to the ballot? And then ultimately, either passes or fails on the ballot in March.
Okay.
And depending on how many amendments you have and what you want to do, you have to have multiple public hearings.
Correct.
Okay.
That's exactly right. So when we're talking about, to your, to your question, the, you know, this particular amendment, I have not done the analysis of whether this would constitute a change in the form of government or a, or a, or a charter amendment by itself. You know, I, I think it's, it's fair to say it would probably be a charter amendment, but, you know, there is still that, that I would say four months long, three months, four months long process that, that commences with a public hearing, and then the, the council deciding, yes, we want to move this forward. Again, as I said in my memo, there's the alternate method of moving forward with a charter amendment or revision, and that is by collection of signatures and petition. But regardless of how we get to the starting point, whether it's by recommendation of the town council or collection of signatures, the process is the same from there.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
I, I think so. You're, you're telling me that no matter which process it follows, it has to go through a process with the state and be voted on by the citizens.
Correct.
So this came cart before the horse. Is that what you're kind of telling me?
I would, I would say that, you know, there, there's a purpose for advisory Warren articles. I think that, you know, advisory Warren articles are, are helpful in gathering information and identifying questions that should be addressed, and I, I think that that's what this exercise has, has been about, you know, discussing these in public comment for the last several meetings. But, you know, I, whether it's putting the cart before the horse or not, I, I can't really say, because I, you know, I, I, it's not my petition.
Yeah, no, I understand.
One thing, so Sunday at, at church, they preached, and they said something that really stuck out to me, things built in a hurry come down in a hurry. And, and that's really my intent, and again, I'm one of five.
Yeah.
We all have equal rights as counselors to, to move things forward or whatever. And really, the duty of the chair is just to set the agenda and have orderly meetings.
No, I, I understand.
But my point is, things built in a hurry come down in a hurry, is never in my time, things put together haste and haste tend to work out for the benefit. And there are consequences or results of, of opening up the charter, or doing charter amendments and stuff like that, and I think having a mindful, thought-out, discussed approach, because remember, we've only had really one time, other than these most recent, to discuss this, and that was during deliberative. So having the opportunity to, to further discuss it, I think is just a mindful approach.
Okay.
So that's my why.
I, no, I can see it as a mindful approach, and I, I don't think that there's, anybody wants to rush into things, but this seemed like it was, you know, to open up things to, to the public, so the public would know things that are happening in town, and be able to either watch them on a video or to come to a meeting.
And I would just like, pardon me, I would just like to remind that on our website, and I understand, you know, people might argue differently, but on the website, we have the calendar that is very up to date.
Yep.
I know our staff put in a lot of time to make sure that's accurate, has accurate information, as well as, you know, we do, we do notice a lot of the meetings in our local publications and such, also on Facebook and what have you. But yeah, like I said, me personally, I think, the way I view it is, March is still March.
Yep.
We have a whole budget season before us.
We do.
From, regardless, based on the memo that, that our town manager prepared, we have, it still has, you know, this is.
To go through that process.
It still has to go a process, however we get there, to, to coin John's term earlier, you know, however we get there, whether it's through, through signatures, through council, it still has to go a March process. And, and that's just really where I, again, I'm not speaking for the council, and that's where I come from.
And I guess my comment and thought is that I don't think that this particular one, I don't, I'm not talking to the others, I'm addressing this one, that I don't think that this does anything to change the form of government. But perhaps I'm wrong, maybe it's bigger than I think.
I would agree, I would agree it doesn't change the form of government. The problem is that we have language in the town charter that, that sets parameters, and this is, you know, may be inconsistent with that, I think.
Well, the language in the town charter is along the lines of that each committee will decide what they're going to do, and they will put their own process in place.
Correct.
And I think we record in excess of 80% of the meetings now, and as far as a time is concerned, if, if committee is finding that a time is not working for the community, and the, and they want to change their time, there's nothing that prevents them from doing it.
That's, that's correct, so.
I mean, town council used to be at 7:30, you know, years, for years.
So a few things just to amplify those points, Counselor Farrell, it is, it is exactly right. It's just, it's just the case that the, the charter happens to address this with, with some specificity. If the charter were silent about this, no problem. I think that you're, he's exactly right as well, Counselor Farrell, that, you know, the, there is a lot of, there is a lot of weight that's placed in the, you know, when, when members of, of the individual boards and committees can get together. I know that, you know, I spoke with the finance director this morning, I asked him about the trustees of the trust fund meeting, because that's one that strikes me as, that's not an off time, that's during the day.
Okay.
And, and the discussion we had was, yes, I mean, he, he sets the initial meeting because after an election to get everyone together, but then it's, it's left to the members of the committee when, when it works for them. Now, you might say, shouldn't be the members of the committee, because it's the people's committee, the people should be, be consulted, and that's true, but you can't have a meeting without the board itself.
Or without a quorum.
Or without a quorum. So that, you know, and some of these are just regular, are just, just come down to practicalities. And then to Counselor Farrell's last point, again, exactly right, we, since I've taken office, you know, and I've heard from, again, this is something that has come to me from the community, I have heard, I've heard that feedback. I've, I have, my, my policy and what I, what I have set as a goal at, at the staff level a goal at the staff level is, I want to record as many of these meetings as possible. I can't speak for the supervisors of the checklist, because I, you know, they are not under my authority.
State mandated.
They're a state statutory board.
And that's a little different.
I know that, you know, I'll be perfectly honest with you, there are committees that have been beating, not on TV, for years, and, you know, people are uncomfortable, some people are uncomfortable having those meetings recorded. My position on that is, again, giving, you know, consideration for, change is difficult, change takes time, too bad. Okay, we're here to serve the public. If you don't want what you're doing, you know, publicized on cable access, maybe you should think about whether it's time to move on. I mean, I don't mean to ruffle feathers, but that's my position on that. However, as Counselor Farrell pointed out, it is just a reality that, you know, I only have so many people in the cable department, and right now, they're out on a good week, maybe three nights a week. I've seen, you know, four, five nights a week, and so I have to conserve my staff resources as well within existing parameters. But in concept, I support recording, I mean, I support making sure that people have access to what's happening at town meetings on their schedule. That's the policy that I've set for my staff, and I think we're working towards it. We have stood up new boards and committees that are, you know, they have tended to be boards and committees that are addressing issues that are timely or, you know, pressing to the community. Let's take, for instance, the utilities committee, the alliance committee, you know, we started, we've added boards and committees, and we've, by and large, taped them, we've recorded them. I anticipate we'll probably want to record the work of the alliance committee as well, because that's something that is going to be useful for people as we go into budget season, as we go to the polls. So, you know, we're moving towards that. Obviously, I don't, you know, I have limited control over when meetings get scheduled, but I do think we try to be responsive, and the council tries to be responsive, to, you can't please everyone, but, one, let's make sure that we can get the people on the board there.
Right.
But, you know, pretty close behind that is, let's make sure that we can get as many people from the public who are interested in going there as well.
Exactly. Okay. That was very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll say, I support every one of these that we can do without amending the charter. The problem is, when it comes to amending the charter, like what Chairman Franz said, if we build it fast, we're going to break it fast, and I'm worried about the unintended consequences about the charter. I support these all in spirit, but we've got to make sure we're doing these things and not these things and some other unintended things.
I can see that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I just answer something now?
Please.
I wanted to let the public speak. Thank you. No, no problems. I'm glad somebody spoke. Deb Paul, 118 Hardy Road, thank you for letting me get up and finish, because I wanted them to speak first. Mr. Malaguti knows, one of my first things, when I was on the council, one of the things we had to do was write down our goals. And that was one of my goals. And I had conversations with Mike about the recording, and like I said, I got the first and last comment was from you, and kudos to the library trustees for doing that, they stepped up to do it. It's just been something that, it hasn't, in my mind, this has been going on for years while I was on the council, so three years, this is four years, that I have been thinking about these sort of things for a while. So it wasn't haphazard for me. And being someone who was on the last charter commission, you can be specific about opening up the charter. You can say, we are opening up the charter like we did that time, just to look at whether we wanted to change from town meeting to deliberative. And we did write a majority and a minority report, and that's how that went. So you can, you can do it specifically, so you don't have to worry about somebody hijacking and revamping the whole town charter. There are possibilities to it.
And Mike and John both articulated that as well.
Yeah. Well, sometimes it wasn't, sorry, Mike, don't be offended, he talks a little too much legal for me. I'm a little simpler. I'm sorry. But, yeah, and that's why I felt like I had to come back up and say something, it wasn't just haphazard. It is about getting transparency out there, so people don't question things. And yeah, I think that even if the council was to adopt it and lead by example and encourage the other committee board members to do so, you wouldn't have to change the charter, because they would do it. Right now, they kind of do what they do, and that's that, but you lead by example, a true leader leads by example, they're the ones going out front and doing the work. And I think that, you know, the people want it, and it's not a change in government, it's a simple request, at least those three things are, the other two are a little more challenging, I would agree. And that's my two cents on it, and I do need clarification on charter stuff, but I'll wait till you reopen the regular public comment.
Is there anyone else on this topic? All right, seeing none, we'll move, yes?
I just wanted to make a small point on this. I half wonder if so many people have voted on this item, because it may, maybe in their viewpoint, think that this is being proposed and potentially being misleading, because we don't have 3,000 people who come to meetings in town, and they may be thinking that we're not having meetings that are appropriate times for people, and someone thinking that we need to change this, when it sounds like we do have the majority of meetings at nighttime. Is that correct, town manager?
The vast majority, but I would say 90-plus percent are occurring at nighttime.
Right. So I would hate to think that so many people are voting for this, thinking that, oh, we're not doing something that's not an appropriate time.
Right. And, you know, I think that it was stated last time that between 6:30 and 7:00 is generally, you know, the sweet spot, but it's not the sweet spot for everybody, either.
Correct.
So, like I said, it's a town of, you know, 26,000 people, it's going to be difficult to get everybody. But I think that the, these are, you know, you can, watching the recording is not the same thing as attending the meeting, but it's better than, better than neither, you know, I guess is the way I would put it.
Section 8.13 speaks to their procedures, and tells you what they're supposed to do and not supposed to do. I guess I'd probably look at it and just say, that's why it was advisory. So it's not that they're not serious, it's just that we need to work through a process and take our time.
Right. And this one, as I said, it's my goal to, you know, to get the remaining meetings, and I think there's probably just two or three of them at this point, recorded.
We had 10 volunteers in cable, like we used to, it wouldn't be a problem.
Yep. So, like I said, my goal is to make this one a moot point by, just at the staff level, achieving the policy that I set out pretty early in my tenure, that I think, you know, there's really no reason, other than practical, why, you know, at some point, we can't record all of these meetings. That's my goal. I can't promise it's going to happen, but, you know, it may not be necessary to open the charter in order to see that, I guess is what I would say to you.
And I think that would be my personal encouragement, is to continue on that track. On this topic, please. Thank you, Mike. Good evening.
Hi, how are you all?
Well, how are you?
Good.
Name an address, please.
My name's Anne Fenn, I'm in 18 Partridge Lane, London Derry, New Hampshire. I was very glad to hear what Michael had to say, because I think that this, it's pretty basic, it's not really, it's basically good government, and it's nice to hear so many positive responses to this. Because you want the public to be involved, you want public participation, you want volunteers to be on the boards in all of our activities. And even if they're not going to attend the meeting, as you said, if all of the meetings are recorded, then at least they can watch it on TV, on cable TV. And I think the scheduling of meetings, I can just tell you, having been involved at the federal level, we always, we tried to hold public meetings in evenings or on weekends, when people could attend. And that's just basic, to having good government, that's my point.
Thank you.
If I may, just one more point, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I think that, you know, it just occurs to me, because Hannah's from utilities, utilities has all the subcommittees, it just, I think, should be stated that, you know, it's one thing to record boards and committees, a whole different story to record subcommittee meetings.
Some of the businesses are only open during nine to five, where the interactions, I can think that a subcommittee may have when they conduct business.
Right. And I think there's at least three subcommittees for utilities, you know, much different resource issue if we're talking about recording all of those. But maybe we'll get there at some point in the future, but I just wanted to clarify that my comments were really geared towards the utilities committee, not the, not the subcommittees. Obviously, if there's an important, you know, meeting, we would do what we can to record those, but, you know, that's the group, I think, that has the most subcommittees that are active at this point in time.
Anyone else from the public?
I'm just going to come up and make my comment.
Go ahead.
Since I am a member of the utility committee.
Again, Martha Smith, 38 Chasler Drive, the, things that are brought up at the subcommittees for the utility committee are always brought back to the general meeting, which is in this room at 7 o'clock on the first Tuesday of every month, so.
That's a good point.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, folks, we'll transition to the second portion of public comment. Champa, name an address, please.
Excuse me for a second. Good evening, everybody. My name is Anne Champa. I'm a curator of the London Derry Historical Society, and I live at 28 Wedgewood Drive.
Thank you.
I knew you were going to ask. And it's back, the 2024 Antiques Appraisal Day at the London Derry Historical Society is coming up this weekend. The London Derry Historical Society is thrilled to announce that the Fourth Annual Antiques Appraisal Day will be held, will be held this Sunday, June 9, in the Parment de Barn, on the grounds of the, that's why I can't, I didn't have my glasses on, on the grounds of the London Derry Historical Society's Morrison House Museum at 140 Pillsbury Road in London Derry. We're gearing up for another great afternoon, featuring your antiques, collectibles, and family treasures at this event, with Daniel F. Reedy, appraiser, antique dealer, auctioneer, who is returning again for his fourth time. Reedy has over 35 years of experience and is the owner of Discerning Eye, an estate appraisal and disposition planning business based in Warner, New Hampshire. The event runs from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., with doors opening at 12:30 p.m. to begin pre-registering all items to be appraised. Appraisals are $10 per item, three for 25. Any types of items can be evaluated, but for extremely large ones, clear photographs can be provided. A dolly and a hand truck will be available for transferring items on site. We had such a great time learning about all the interesting items everyone brought in the past, that we're really looking forward to seeing what you bring in this year. That towering German carved bear halter, the beautiful historic porcelain brooch, that what is it, that kept us all guessing, we still don't know to this day, and so many other items elicited oohs and ahs, and even some laughs along the way. It's a really enjoyable afternoon, so we hope you'll join us for our 2004 Antiques Appraisal Day, a fundraiser for the London Derry Historical Society. Just a note, we'll also have free refreshments for you to enjoy while you're there. Start gathering your finds for it this Sunday, June 9. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, I just want to mention that Kirsten Hildanen will also be assisting the appraiser with her computer and her fast fingers. Appreciate it, Kirsten.
Anne, real quick, are there any items he does not appraise?
No.
No? So electronics and/or comic books, or anything else that someone may want to bring by, or something else like that?
Anything you want.
Anything you want, okay.
He's been, he's had his own antique store, you know, he's had 35 years of experience, and I think he's just amazing. So come on down, everybody, if you're, if you don't have anything to bring, come on down and listen. I made it, I started it, it was actually more than four years ago, because we didn't have it during COVID, to be more educational, not multiple appraisers, but one appraiser, and everybody can sit and listen to what's being appraised and learn about different things. So it's a great afternoon. Please don't come by at 12 noon, when we ask, the doors open at 12:30, because we may still be setting up. But anyways, it should be a great afternoon, hopefully the weather stays okay. But anyways, it'll be rain or shine in the Parment de Barn. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comment from the public? All right, see?
Sherri Farrell, London Derry Town Clerk, the Town Clerk Minute, we'll try to do this at the town council minutes, meetings. So first of all, very important day tomorrow, tomorrow is the last day for residents, for registered voters, to change their party. So if you wanted to change from a Republican to a Democrat, a Democrat to Republican, you need to do that tomorrow. The good news is, is that our supervisors of the checklist have a session tomorrow evening, 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. So if someone has a difficult time getting here, you know, during the workday, that time's available, can always call our office, and we can help you with that, too, if you have any other questions. It's the law, unfortunately, though, so there are no, there's no gray on that one, so very important, help us spread the word.
And you can also go from undeclared to a...
Oh, very good point, right, absolutely. If you're an undeclared voter, then at the primary, you'll get to pick your ballot, but if you, exactly right, Chairman, if you want to go from undeclared to either party, that's your opportunity to do it. And of course, you can come in during the day, 8:30 to 5:00, our office is open, it's very quick, small card, and you're all set. Second thing, we need your help on our dog registrations. The last time I was up here, we had 1,200 of our 5,500-ish dogs that were still unregistered, it's for everyone's safety, including our puppies, so if you can help us to spread the word. By June 20, we will by law need to issue civil forfeitures, and remember, that's $25 extra per dog that's unregistered, plus a dollar per month, and it adds up. And again, that's one of those things, we don't want to do it, in a way, we do, I do, because it's the law, and it protects us all. If your dog's lost, you know, it really is a good thing that we have in place, cats, it's, you know, it doesn't count, but our dogs. Some states, like Rhode Island, they have dogs and cats. I promised it was a minute, I think I'm up to two. So lastly, please help us with that also. If you've moved, if your dog has passed, or you no longer have the dog, period, please let us know that, we want to get that count down much lower before we send out these civil forfeitures.
How many total dogs do you say?
Right now, Counselor Combs, the good news is, we're down to 748. A special shout out to our Deb DeRoches, too, because she's my key person on those, everyone chips in and, you know, helps out with it, but she's been masterful with it. So, you know, years ago, I would have been saying the number 4,000, so to be down to 748, and I'm hoping that, you know, you kind of get an extra little bit of grace, period there, with the next 20 days before we present the warrant to all of you, and that warrant will have all of the unregistered dogs listed on it, so thank you for that. Tax collector information, tax bills went out last Thursday, they'll be due July 1, great job by everyone on that. And that's it. Any questions? I guess I'm going to have to call the town clerk three minutes. Sorry, everyone, sorry, but thank you. Any questions?
Anything from the council?
Thank you for your support, and thanks, all right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
Oh, you're going, go, go.
Yeah. I need my turn.
I know, I know. I was waiting for the general opinion.
Ray Preston, 3 Gary Drive, I just have a quick question, are you going to allow public comment in regards to the amendment on the storm ordinance?
It's a public hearing. It's a first reading.
Okay, so, no?
So there'll be a public hearing next time?
Yeah.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, just one of these, is John Trady going to present that, or who's present?
It's the first reading, typically, the council waives the first reading, John will probably, most likely be present, or the town, or represent town manager for this.
Where it's a first reading, and where I understand the subject matter, and am prepared to address it, I gave John the night off.
Thank you.
So, will it be read today?
No.
Oh.
We typically waive the first reading, the council can make the decision, the council typically waives the first reading.
I see.
And then we have a public hearing where there's further discussion during the next meeting.
Okay.
That's correct, it is included in its entirety in the agenda, for reference.
And just one other question, it says it's an amendment to it, what?
I think, Mike, we'll get into that presentation when we move to that on the agenda. I think, Mike, we'll get into that presentation when we move to that on the agenda.
It's in the packet. All the amendments are in red.
None of them are in red on mine.
You can have, you can have mine.
No? Later.
I'll make sure you get it.
Yeah. So, Mr. Chair, the major, the major changes, it just, it's mostly the existing regulations, as Counselor Farrell pointed out. The, the major change is it's just making an enforceable process for a permit as required under the MS4 permit that the town has. So you now have to get a permit. There will be follow-up. There will be monitoring to make sure that applicants are complying with their obligations, whereas some of that structure hasn't been in place to date.
Yeah, but it is a federal requirement.
It, the amendments are implementing, are responding to a federal mandate. That's correct.
Right, and it also requires public involvement.
I read it already.
Oh, do you want mine?
Ones and reds.
I, I read it already, so you can have it.
Okay.
Yes, it does require public involvement, which is the purpose for the, for the public hearing. Correct.
Well, public involvement in the process.
Correct. The MS4 has difference, yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else from the public? Sir?
Good evening. Rick Olson, 1165 Silly Road, Manchester, President, Londonderry Fishing Game Club. On a different matter than matters I've been here before. A little bit of background. I, I used to be employed by Mueller Services as a, as a underwriter. I would go around the properties and make inspections to underwrite insurance, do a standard underwriting report. One of the properties I had several years ago was the Grange Hall, and I met Jim Adams there at the Grange Hall. And when I looked at the electrical, I was kind of, you know, I thought, knowing the insurance company that insured that, I thought that was going to be an issue. So when I went away from, after meeting with Jim, I, it just didn't sit well with me. So I went to my board at the Londonderry Fishing Game Club and I said, hey, I, I think I got an idea for a good community service project. And so make a long story short, because I have limited time, rewired the entire building. And because, you know, we have that labor pool at our club, licensed master electricians, we pulled the permits, did the wiring, had it inspected, et cetera, got a new can for it, so it's got new wiring. And that we did out of, you know, just to purchase a little public goodwill. And we called it a community service project, you know. But, you know, the chattering class in town, oh, don't get in bed with the Londonderry Fishing Game Club. They're going to want something. So here we are, three years later, we haven't asked for anything other than a couple of variances. So, you know. So the, the reason I wanted to talk about that is we've been approached about another project. We had, well, we get approached all the time with these different projects after doing that. And, and that was a big project, by the way, for, you know, for real world money. That probably would have cost $40,000 for them to rewire that. And we did that, and I think there's even a little plaque that says Londonderry Fishing Game Club. That's about the only thing we did. But we've been approached about another project and not ready to disclose what that is yet. We had one that, you know, that, it was disc golf, and I said, well, you know, where's this going to be? Oh, it's on town land. Well, have you approached the town? No, we haven't, not yet. But now, okay. You know, I'm talking to the town yet. We can't talk to you. So, you know, things like that. So, and, but we, we do have a, a project in the works, and I just wanted to be on public record that we're going to be looking at it and, you know, as soon as we get the details worked out and all the liabilities and legalities, then we'll be doing that. But I wanted to get that out there for the chattering class, so.
Thank you for your continued contributions to this community.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Take care.
Anyone else?
Now I can ask the question, right?
Good evening. Name an address, please.
Good evening. Deb Paul, 118 Hardy Road. This question, Mr. Chair, is for Mr. Malaguti on the how you open up the charter. So I read it, and it says you have to get 20% of the signatures from the last election, but it doesn't specify which last election. Is it the last town election, which is reasonable to do? But if it means the last election held in town, which would be a presidential election, primy, you know, that whole thing, that would be astronomical. So that would be question one. Like, which election are you speaking of when you say the last election? And what is the timeframe in which I have to get the request to open up the charter to Mr. Malaguti to look at and that I can start collecting those signatures? Because if I only have a month to do it, that's kind of crazy. So I, those were the two important questions that I needed to get answered in order to move this forward. And it would be, excuse me, one more thing. It would only be for the planning board to be elected as opposed to appointed, and it would only be for the budget committee to come into compliance with RSA 14, lowercase b.
That'd be a change in government.
Right. The latter one, I'm less able to speak to right now, but the, I'm 99% sure that it is the last regular municipal election.
Okay.
For purposes of counting the signatures. And there is a fairly complex, because I was trying not to be overly legal, process for submitting what, what it is that you want to do to the town. It would actually be through the town clerk's office. The clerk issues blank signature cards. And there's a, there's a very specific process that's laid out in statute, and I'm certainly happy to direct you to that statute. As far as the changing to the elected, I'm sorry, to an official budget committee, that may entail more process because it's a change in the form of government, and I would need to look at that further.
So, excuse me, Mr. Chair, can, can you kind of give me, can Mr. Malaguti kind of give me a, a time estimation of when he can get that information to me, because I would like to start doing this as soon as possible, for those two especially. I mean.
I think you need to speak to legal counsel, because we cannot offer legal advice.
That's right. That's right. I, I can direct you to the statute, but I, I can't advise you. First of all, I'm not, you know, I, I don't represent the town at this point.
I, I understand.
We have outside legal counsel, who's the town attorney. And again, attorneys can't give legal advice to, to people who aren't their clients. I can explain to you what I understand the law to be, but that's exactly right.
No, I understand. I just want to make sure I take the appropriate steps so nobody can say I didn't do it the right way. That's all I'm trying to do.
I mean, the other provision is that the town council can open the charter without signatures.
Okay, but.
That there is, that there is that provision in the charter, that the town council can vote by majority vote to open the charter.
Well, that was my hope by putting it on the ballot, that you would see that there was support for it and that, that would have happened, but, you know.
I, I've said I don't have any objection to it.
I, I'm just looking at my options, John. That's all I'm trying to do. I'm sorry.
Believe it or not, I'm trying to help you.
I know, I know.
So Mr. Faber said it very well. Go through a process, follow the laws, ask people what to do. We have a, we have a long budget cycle. The council can decide to open the charter in November and, and put it on the ballot. Just as an option so that you're aware. That's all.
So can those processes be presented here at council or to me in an email as to exactly what I need to do as an individual to start this process going?
I think.
Or do you have to start that process?
Said is that he could direct you to the RSA, but can't provide advice on the legality or an opinion.
Talking.
Go ahead.
I'm, now I'm really confused.
I'm sorry.
He's talking about two separate, two separate things.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
We can generate it from our end, from the town council end, and vote by majority vote to open the charter. There's also the citizen part where you'd have to go and follow what's in that RSA.
Right, those RSA's.
Two separate things.
Well, that's what I, that's why I got confused just then. I was trying to follow John's advice in going through a process, and I'm trying to understand what that process is. So do I have to take any steps or is it you guys that have to take the steps?
So I guess, I guess the best way to explain it is, is that if the town council decided it wanted to go through that process, the town council would engage the town attorney and would go through the process with the town attorney's advice on how to proceed. It will be a costly legal matter to do it. I don't know what it will cost, but it'll be five figures or more to go through that process. It has to go through the state. There's multiple steps that have to be taken. If a citizen decides that they want to decide to go out and to take that process on, the town can't advise you on how to do that because you're not the client of, of the town attorney. You'd have to get your own legal advice on how to do that. What Mr. Malaguti is saying is, is I can direct you to the statute, but I am no longer a practicing attorney.
No, I, I understood all of that, but I thought I was hearing two different things.
They are two different things.
Okay, so I guess I will sit down and read this and try to figure it out and try to get this process with the signatures going. Right?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Real, one quick update. The town clerk had asked that I just, she had a correction regarding the time of the supervisor's session. It is 6:00 to 7:30, not at 7:00 p.m. So just for that clarification. Is there anyone else for public comment? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close public comment, move on our, on our agenda. We're going to move to appointments. So for the Conservation Commission, I have Richard Lombard. Is Richard present?
Yes.
Please come forward, sir. So typically, the, what we do is the council has in hand your talent bank form with your explanation. But typically, the way things happen is the council will ask you to provide, you know, your name and address and a brief introduction about yourself, why you chose this commission, and then we'll open it up to the council as a whole for any questions that they might have. Sound good?
Sounds good.
All right. Sir, the floor is yours.
My name is Richard Lombard. I live at 46 Cala Road. And I haven't, I moved here about four years ago. And I'm very much interested in, I think one of the major things Conservation Commission does with advising the town's natural resources. And I've had, you know, a number of careers that touched upon things like that. And so that's when I saw the, the opening for the alternate on the Conservation Commission. I said, I'll apply. It's, I do a lot of hiking. I do our stuff. I do a lot of conservation work down at the Trustees of Reservations in Massachusetts, bird and, birding and things like that. And most recently, I was taking a walk down the rail trail, Londonderry Rail Trail. And you'd figure, well, there's, you know, you don't expect to see too much there in terms of really interesting wildlife. But going down, I was walking with a couple of friends, and one of them said, is that a turtle? A turtle isn't that big of a deal, but it, I've, I've reported in the past a few Blandings turtles in Massachusetts. I said, no, that's a Blandings turtle, and they are endangered in your state. Massachusetts, they're at the threatened list. So I did go through the process. I reported it to the New Hampshire Fishing Game. And, yeah, so I'm, you know, when I saw the Conservation Commission and natural resources, you know, that's, you know, I just, I just enjoy that stuff. And so I'm also a volunteer for the New Hampshire Audubon since it's coming up here and Southeast Land Trust. And I lead hikes for AMC, well, Massachusetts and New Hampshire. And of course, I do the bird work for the trustees in Massachusetts, which is a land, it's, it's a land trust, cultural trust for Massachusetts. But I've been down there, you know, I've been volunteering for them for quite a while. I do mostly bird, grassland birds and stuff like that. And we try to get, we have nest boxes for kestrels, the American kestrel, which is our smallest falcon in North America. I was hoping that the state of Massachusetts, with listed on their endangered species list, they didn't make it this year. But New Hampshire has them because their population is really declining. And if you look at the, they're listed as a species of special concern right now in New Hampshire. So.
Any questions from the council for Mr. Lombard?
I have a quick question.
Please.
Richard, thank you for applying. Quick question. Have you attended a meeting at all? I know the Conservation Commission likes to have people attend one meeting at least before they apply, and if you get a chance to see a meeting on TV or apply to.
I have been, I, well, I went to one meeting so far.
Okay.
But I've, I'm, I'm pretty familiar with public meetings and stuff. I was in, on the, in Massachusetts, Town of Groveland, I was on the Board of Health, which is actually an elected body in Massachusetts, in the Trails and Open Space Committee and, and Conserv-, well, it's, yeah. But I did go to that one meeting.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
I have a soft spot for animals, so thank you for identifying the endangered turtle, and that, that warmed my heart to voting for your read.
All right, so with that, I'll accept the motion.
Who can fight with turtles? I approve to approve.
Well, you have a lot of signs in town, turtles crossings, so there must be a passion.
Chair, son, we have one applicant for the ConsCom, and there are two positions. One is a two-year alternate, one is a three-year alternate, correct?
Correct.
All right. Sir, which position interests you most, the two or the three-year alternate position? No pressure.
Two-year, I guess.
So the two-year.
So I can work my way in.
All right, so with that, I'll accept a motion to accept Richard Lombard.
So moved.
For the two-year alternate position. I have a motion from Ron and a second from Ted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Mr. Lombard, can you please make an appointment with the town clerk to be sworn in?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, Senior Resource Committee. This is for applicant for an alternate position. We have James Barris. James, are you available? James is not available. I did, the council did receive a talent bank form. Given the fact that James had filled out in detail some information, he's also an Army veteran and is willing to continue to serve our community, I'll accept a motion for the one, two-year alternate position for the Senior Resource Committee for James Barris. I have a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second from John, a second from Ted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Chair votes in the affirmative. We have a planning board or heritage. So planning board, we don't have any. Chair, son, is that correct?
That is correct. There was one candidate who was interested in both, and he clarified that he would prefer heritage.
Okay, and that person is Jim Butler. Similar thing as James Barris. We do know Jim Butler quite well. And you said he's interested in the heritage?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. With that, I'll accept the motion. And there's no other applicants, sorry, for the, for this that we received during the timeframe?
Um, not.
Okay. So with that, I'll accept the motion.
So moved.
To accept. So I have a motion and a second, and this is for the heritage. Two-year applicant for the two-year alternate. Any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Chair votes in the affirmative.
I'm sorry, could I ask a second? Is that?
Please. That was.
Ron.
Sean and Ron. And then Beautify Londonderry. Is Karen Riddle present? Hi, Karen. Can you come forward, please? Good evening.
Good evening.
So same, same as the gentleman prior. Just name an address and a brief introduction. You're interested in the Beautif-, I'm sorry, Beautify, Beautify Londonderry position, the ad hoc full position or the alternate position?
Well, I'm Karen Riddle. I live at 8 South Parish Drive in Londonderry. Perhaps I should attend a meeting first. I have not done that.
You don't have to. We need Beautify Londonderry people, and I just read your background. You're perfect.
Well, thank you, thank you. I have enjoyed participating in the spring cleanup the last couple of years, and I was approached to ask if I would be interested in joining. So that's my reason for being here tonight. I enjoy volunteering. I have been a resident for, in Londonderry for about 15 years, and I was a member of ALERT for about 10 years before stepping down. Yeah, I think I, I really would like to attend a meeting and see what it's all about.
Wonderful. Any questions from the council?
No.
All right. Do I have a motion? So, excuse me, full, full position or the alternate?
I, I guess I would need to know the difference in the level of commitment. Um, I, I guess I would need to know the difference in the level of commitment and what that involves.
Kirsten, maybe you'll tell us more.
Please.
The, the chair is at here.
Oh, wonderful. That'd be great.
Is there any little difference? Should I come to the mic?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Karen, so happy to have you stand up. I'm Joy Froggumullah. I'm the chairperson of Beautify Londonderry. Karen, the difference really is in voting. So as an alternate, you, you would vote if we didn't have a full member there. And, or we didn't have a quorum and you were present to fill that quorum. But the, but the time commitment, it would really be similar, and it's up to you.
Okay.
You know, so, so it could be as little or as much as you, as you wanted. And we are so thankful to have you every spring.
Okay, well, thank you for explaining. So which position?
Um, the, there was the alternate in the.
Full, full member?
Yes, yes, full member.
Full member?
Yes.
So with that, I'll accept a motion to appoint Karen Riddle as a full member position on Beautify Londonderry.
So moved. Second.
But motion from Ron, a second from Ted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes in the affirmative. Please see the town clerk.
Thank you.
To be sworn in. Thank you for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any support. All right, CIP Committee. Michael Kelly or any of the town staff, can you, Kelly, can you provide an update on the, on your memo?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. The memo in your packets outlines a list of recommended members for the CIP Committee. That's the capital improvements plan. We're getting ready to start updating that this month. And so it includes a representative from the town council, a representative from the school board, budget committee, and two planning board representatives. So we're looking for the council to accept these nominations as presented.
I'll motion to accept.
A motion from John, a second from Ron. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain. Chair votes in the affirmative. Please let the record reflect. My apologies on the confundal. The header clearly says you. Thank you very much. All right. Please be sworn in for this as well. All right, new business. Ordinance 2024-03, amendments to the storm water ordinance and storm water regulation, first reading. Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, Mr. Chair. As I said earlier, this is an amendment to an existing storm water ordinance, which we do have. And it makes changes to the permitting process. It really makes it more enforceable. And it also implements regulations that control things like sediment and erosion control. So that is going to be presented at the next meeting. John Charrie will be here, and there will be a public hearing.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the council? All right, seeing none, I'll accept the motion to waive the first reading for ordinance 2024-03.
So moved.
I have a motion from Ted and a second from Ron. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes in the affirmative. Thank you, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Public hearing. So I'll accept the motion to open public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
A motion from Sean, a second from Ted. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes in the affirmative. Municipal Aggregation Committee Heritage on adopting a community choice under RSA 53E. So Lynn Wiles from the, who's the chairman of the Utilities Committee and representative from Freedom Energy Logistics and Colonial Power. Power, good evening.
So, good evening, Mr. Chair, councilors, town staff, how's everybody tonight? My name's Lynn Wiles. I'm the chair of the Utilities, Londonderry Utilities Committee. My address is 46 Bartley Hill Road. And we're here tonight, and with me is Stuart Ormsby. Stuart is the vice president of Power Supply Strategies from the Colonial Power Group. Colonial Power, along with Freedom Energy Logistics, will be the team that will be partnering with, as we go forward with adopting this program at some point in time downstream. First statute, adopting a program like that does require two public hearings. And this is our first public hearing. Stuart has a slide deck prepared to walk through it, but this is just one step of the process. It's a fairly long, drawn-out process, but this is just the next step in it. So with that, Stuart?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Again, Stuart Ormsby of Colonial Power Group. So as Lynn teed up, just a really quick background, the Utilities Committee worked with us to create a plan. It's required under the statute to, to draft up an aggregation plan. So the, the purpose of tonight's public hearing is to talk about the contents of that plan, sort of the objectives of the program, allow for public comment, questions from the council, of course. And then we have to, as Lynn said, we have to have a second public hearing per the statute prior to this plan finally being filed with the state utility commission for its review and approval. That, just talking a little bit more about the process, the utility commission is pretty good about turning these plans around fairly quickly. They had been turning them around between one and two months. So once the plan is approved, provided that, of course, the council is interested in pursuing this, then that allows the community to go forward and procure electricity on behalf of its residents. So that, so let me talk a bit about what this is all about. So a community choice aggregation program, this is something that the town is at least considering, and we have a plan for it. And the concept of this is the town sort of aggregates together residents who are currently taking their power supply from their local utility company. So in the case of Londonderry, we're talking predominantly about Eversource, although there are about a couple hundred folks or so who are served by the New Hampshire Co-op in town. So those folks are currently, again, taking their power supply from the utility companies. They haven't taken advantage or pursued the option of, of going into the market and buying third-party power supply. And this provides sort of an alternative option for customers as opposed to just simply buying from the utility company. The town on their behalf is aggregating folks together and buying on their behalf. And importantly, this doesn't intend at all to interfere with people taking their own decisions on their own, to contract directly with a third-party supplier. It doesn't intend to interfere with their option to stay with the utility company. They can do that, too. But this is just a free option, and we'll talk about some of the benefits of it going forward. See, do I have control? Ah, thank you. So just some bullets on, on the benefits of such a program. Again, it's an option in addition to the utility option. Key part of these programs are a few things. One is price stability. When you kind of compare what an aggregation program can do compared to the way the utilities procure power supply, utilities follow a process. Every six months, on a very set schedule, they go out and buy a power supply. And so that's independent whether or not that's a good time to buy or not. They just, they follow a schedule that's dictated to them by the utility commission. With an aggregation program, you know, administered by a consultant, you can be much more strategic. And you can look for opportunities in the market to buy power, lock in fixed prices for a term. The, the program is, is fully flexible. It provides full optionality for customers. They can come and go into the program as they wish. They can decide at the onset to, to stay out perhaps, see what the experience of their neighbors is before jumping in, and that's fine. They can come in four months later with no fee or, or anything. And they can jump out later without any exit penalty. So free in and out. Oftentimes, programs are interested in offering options to the residents. So that's another element that a current consumer doesn't get with the utility company. It's just, there's one power supply option, and that's, and that's it. Here, you can offer other product options, typically some options that have greater renewable content. Undoubtedly, there are going to be customers in town who would really like to buy a product that's 100% renewable, and they're willing to pay a little bit more for that. So the program can offer that. A program such as this is not, doesn't cost any cost burden on the town itself. You know, there's no taxing element to this. The administrative costs undertaken by our company, it's built into the fee that the customers are paid. And full disclosure, if, say, the, the town decides to move forward, they sign a contract with the supplier for 10 cents a kilowatt hour, our administrative fee is, is .1. So instead of 10 cents, it's 10.1 cents a kilowatt hour. That's built into the rate. The, you know, in contrast to customers trying to take advantage of contracting directly with third-party suppliers, certainly there are many cases where customers have done well for that. And you can do well in, in the direct market, provided you're really paying attention. The, the challenge is, you might get a robocall, you might sign up by a persuasive salesperson, and, and it works well for the first six months, and then you sort of forget about it. And like myself, you're not as attentive as you wish you were. And so what happens after that six-month period, more often than not, the rate goes up. And so whatever savings you earned in those six months kind of goes away two or three months after that. So that's one of the, the challenges of the direct market choice. So this, again, we're just providing another alternative. Some important elements, the, your, your current utility company, whether it's Eversource or the Co-op, they're still, they're still, you know, the key component of the service. They're the delivery company. They still maintain the wires. They, they read the meter. They're going to continue to conduct the billing. So it's still going to be a single bill from Eversource or the Co-op. The only thing that changes is a single line item. Instead of being the utilities' power supply, it's now the, the Londonderry aggregation program rate. All utility services are unaffected. If you have a budget billing set up with your utility, if you take advantage of energy efficiency or energy assistance, none of that is interrupted. That continues as is. Any, you know, any issues with, with your power going out, you're still going to call Eversource, you're still going to call the Co-op. Nothing changes from that aspect. The last bullet on this slide, you know, can, can Lynn or I say savings are going to be guaranteed under this program? No, we can't. I mean, the objective of the program is to have, again, competitive rates relative to what you would have paid if you'd been with utility. That's always the, the primary goal. But there could be opportunities where, because the utility rate, as you've experienced yourselves, fluctuates every six months, there can be periods of time where maybe that utility rate, just sort of by luck dips below the program rate. Oftentimes, programs are looking, again, for a little bit more price stability of, on behalf of their residents. So a lot of times, towns are entering into maybe two or three-year contracts. A couple important points here, net metering customers. So here, we're talking predominantly about customers who have rooftop solar. And, and this is a statewide issue. This is not unique to Londonderry by any means. But unfortunately, the, if, well, not unfortunately, but we're going to be very careful with customers who are net metering customers. Because let me step back. One thing I should have said right on the outset, the way that this program operates is called an opt-out program. And so what that means is, all the residents I talked about who are currently taking power supply from the utility, they're considered to be in the program unless an individual customer decides they do not want to be part of this program. With the net metering consumers, we are not going to automatically enroll these customers in the program. And the reason is, and just to simplify it a little bit, the utility company is in a position to be able to provide credits to those customers during those periods of times when the customer has excess generation. You know, their solar output is greater than what they're, they're consuming at their house. A program supplier is not in a position to be able to provide that credit. So those customers can certainly opt into the program if they wish. And we're happy to talk with them to help them make that decision, whether it makes sense. But for most customers, they're going to be better off staying with the utility company. Staying informed, obviously, there's, there's going to be a big emphasis on behalf of the program to make sure we're doing what we can to get the word out, not just at program launch, but also on an ongoing basis. Our company's going to stand up a dedicated website for the program. That's always going to have the latest information. On that website, people can opt in and out of the program. And of course, you know, our, our phone numbers will be splashed everywhere so they can call us and do it over the phone as well. I already talked about sort of the, I got out of order right at the onset, but this is the, the, the steps of the process that we already talked about. So this, again, third bullet down, we're, we're conducting the first of the two public hearings. Goes back to the council for them, up or, up or down vote whether they want to continue to pursue this with the, the state process. If they decide they still like the idea, then it's a state process. The PUC approves the plan. And this is just sort of an indicative timeline. So we could be getting an approval from the util-, from the Utility Commission in the fall, which would mean we might launch the program, depending on market conditions, perhaps in the first quarter of 2025. And then just a few comments in terms of the, the really important period of customer outreach. You know, today, we're, we're taking any comments on the plan itself and the concept. But here's where it really matters, which is now I'm jumping ahead to, we've, we've gotten all the approvals. We're now going out to market. We're, we're collecting bids. The town has, has seen a price that they like. They sign a contract. So then the notices go out to customers. So we will do a mailed notice to all eligible customers at least 30 days prior to when the program's going to get underway. We will hold at least one public information session. And those sessions are typically very well-attended because now at that point, the customers have gotten the notice. They have prices to compare. That's when they get real specific information. You know, today, I can't tell you anything about prices because it just depends. And that's when people are going to have to make a decision. If they want to be enrolled in the program, they will automatically be enrolled. But if they do not, they would have to notify us that they want to opt out, and we're happy to do that for them. So that's the overview of, of the program. Happy to entertain any questions?
All right, so what we're going to do, so being that this is a public hearing, I'm going to open it up.
Mr. Chair, just a couple of comments first before you get into public comment. So I just want to say that the Utility Committee supports moving forward with this program with Colonial Power Group, Freedom Energy Logistics. There's another couple of suppliers or a couple of competitors in New Hampshire. And we went through, doing our due diligence, and we feel that they're a very capable and competent organization, and we support going forward with them.
You also have a majority of your committees here present.
Yes, yeah. The, the support is outstanding. It's, it's a great committee. So a lot of participation on all facets of that. I do want to say that many communities throughout New Hampshire are starting to implement programs like this. So we're not the first, but we're certainly a leader in doing this type of program. But I think the benefits are being seen throughout the state. And just one other comment. So this is the first public hearing. We will be having a second public hearing, probably on a Saturday morning, probably at the high school cafeteria. That's to be determined, but that's to be able to be more receptive to the, the public once they learn more about what's going on.
Perfect. Thank you. My apologies for, for cutting you off and going to the public. So any, any comment from the public? Seeing none, we'll go back to the council.
I got one question for Stuart. Just came up today. So when a person gets that card in the mail, they can opt out before the program starts?
That's correct, yes.
Because I had a question about, you know, that you have to stay in for 30 days and once you're in it, right? Once you're in the program, you have to stay in for the next month, the cycle out, correct?
Yeah, no, thank you for that. So, right, the, the ability for any customer to, to enter or exit the program can only happen on that customer's meter read date.
Right.
Yeah. So, so that's an important point. So if, let's say, just to keep going with this idea, let's say they're out of town when, when all this launch is happening and they, and they don't see that first notice. So yes, they would automatically be enrolled for the first month, but if they decide they really want out, then, you know, they can jump out of the program on their next meter read after that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Perfect. Anyone else from the council? All right. Well, thank you very much. We look forward to that date to be set for the second hearing. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And thank you to your committee as well.
Chad, real quick, would that technically be our next meeting in June? Because they want to have our public hearings for that in June and then move forward in July to the state, correct?
The, the.
Coming to your plan.
Yeah, I mean, the, right, the dates on that slide is sort of indicative. I mean, that, that's the timetable that could happen, but it's.
As an example.
As an example.
Okay. I just want to make sure what kind of time plan you guys are shooting for.
Yeah, I think what's, what would be advantageous is if, again, if the town decides to move forward, is that, and here I am working backwards, is that we get a, a commission approval sometime in the fall. So that, because oftentimes, a really good time to buy is in the, the spring, like March or April. So it'd be great to set the town up for that opportunity.
Yeah. And Ted, one other thing about the second public hearing is, we want to have a little bit of time between this hearing and the next one for people so they can learn more about what's going on. So they'll be more educated at that second public hearing, ask better questions.
Not necessarily the next council meeting.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, whatever timeline that we're trying to hit to with the state.
Yeah, we're not going to have it aligned with the next town council meeting. We're not going to align the next publics, or the second public hearing for this. We're not going to align the next publics, or the second public hearing for this with a town council meeting. It'll be a standalone meeting.
Sounds like we have time.
Great, sounds good, thank you.
But just to be clear, the, the decision on adoption does need to come back to the council. It's the council that's going to be making that decision. And to your point, councillor, Mr. Vice Chair, it does need to happen at a town council meeting, that decision.
Yeah, that is true.
Thank you for that clarification.
I think the thing we've got to consider is Eversource updates their rates in February and August. So if we have the rate when this starts began at a certain time, and someone wants to make a decision to change, and I haven't worked all those details out in my head, I've just thought about it. They've got to be able to compare that.
Yes, yeah, so it. Kind of say that back to you, I think, is it's going to be important that we know what the Eversource rate is and the co-op's rate is, so that people can make that comparison. And also, it's, it's written in the plan itself that the program won't launch unless the program rate is below the utility's rate.
Because for example, if we did it in July, and all of a sudden Eversource comes out, cuts the rate the next month, there's going to be a bunch of angry people.
Absolutely, absolutely, no, that's the plan, yep.
Yeah, we should know, the PUC usually gives us a heads up at least a couple of months in advance.
Oh, okay.
So that we know what the rate is. And it's like today, if you decide to use a different, you know, you know, supplier today, you, you opt out after 30 days if you want to.
Yep, yep. And I've done that before.
Yeah.
Anything else from the council? Anything from the public? All right, thank you both for your time.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. All right, folks, we are still in a public hearing. Order 2024-07, a renewal of junkyard license per RSA 236, Murray's Autos. We have the assistant building inspector, Brad Anderson, here. Good evening, sir, how are you?
Great, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so you are here before us to brief Murray's Auto.
I am.
Dis ordinance, correct?
I am.
All right, so you have a presentation?
With a inspection recently on May 28th of 2024, the subject junkyard was conducted in compliance with the license conditions in preparation for renewal. No adverse conditions were observed during the inspection that would prohibit renewal for the license. He continues to work with DES to maintain compliance with the recommended best management practices. And during my visit, it appeared that Mr. Dudik is following proper best management practices, primarily speaking of proper storage of batteries, oil, gasoline, antifreeze. My recommendation, based on the recent inspection and other visits to the property during the year, it appears that the applicant, applicant is operating within the requirements of their license, and renewal of the license is recommended.
Thank you. So folks, this is a public hearing. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll move to the council. Council, do you have any questions?
Motion to approve.
All right, so I have a motion from John.
Second.
I have a second from Ted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes in affirmative, any opposed? Sorry. All right, ordinance 2024-07 for Murray's Auto is adopted. Ordinance 2024-08, the renewal of junkyard licensing per RSA 236. This is SNS Metals, sir.
All right. On the same date of May 28th, 2024, I performed an inspection of the, the junkyard to determine compliance with the license conditions in preparation for the renewal. There were however, some junk vehicles and concrete barriers that needed removal. When asked, they were removed promptly. We are still in the process of opening up that fire lane with one barrier left. And speaking with the owner, Mr. Salamini, he said he's in perfect compliance with going along with anything that I ask and be done in a short order. As far as the rest of the junkyard, he continues to work with the DES maintaining compliance with best management practices. Due to the nature of the junkyard operation as determined by DES, Mr. Salamini also operates in a recycling facility for the non-automotive metals received at this site. Based on the recent inspection and other visits to the property during the year, it appears the applicant is operating within the requirements short of the issues that I told you about, which we are working on, and renewal of the license is recommended.
Any questions from the public? From the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
So a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes in affirmative. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Counsel.
Resolution 2024-12, the, acceptance of unanticipated revenue under RSA 31: Colon 95B, Section 3A, which is the Invest New Hampshire Municipal Planning and Zoning Grant, as our assistant town manager had outlined several meetings before, a meeting prior. So with that, Kelly, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as you mentioned, I've, this is the grant that I've been discussing. This is part of Governor Sununu's $100 million Invest New Hampshire initiative, a portion of which has been dedicated to allocating these kinds of grants to municipalities to use to update their land use regulations, specifically with respect to housing. And so we have been awarded $50,000 to be used to update and review our land use regulations, again, specifically as it relates to housing. That does not necessarily mean that we'll be changing any regulation or amending any regulation to be more or less favorable to housing. It's simply to review and audit our existing land use regulations, as well as our master plan, I should point out, which we are currently starting that process to update.
Awesome, thank you. Any questions from the public? Any questions from the council? I'll accept a motion to adopt resolution 2024-12. I have a motion from John, second from Ron, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair, any opposed? Kelly, thank you very much for continuing to look for new ways to better our community and offset some of the costs for our taxpayers. So good work on that, and thank you.
Castle support.
Thank you. And the chair votes also in the affirmative. Approval of May 20th minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A motion from Ted and a second from Ron, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes in affirmative, minutes are approved. Liaison reports, do I have any?
Let's name that be a liaison report. I got a very interesting alert while I was sitting here about best gifts for dads for Father's Day. And they were called, they're, they're barbecue fan letter branding irons. So since there's three of us with Fs, I just wanted to let you know that F's available. I also checked and C and D are available, so if you have any beauty you want to brand, since that seems to be a popular thing, I'm not understanding why fathers need these. But just wanted to let you know that they're available and, and, and for the low, 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 low price of $22, you can get one tomorrow.
Buy now.
There we go.
Just in case you wanted to brand somebody.
And with an F, no one will know who's guilty.
Exactly.
And we didn't care.
They won't see it coming.
Yes.
Just don't, I chair. I don't have anything else, thank you.
Thank you. Town manager report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll try to move quickly, I have a, a few different items tonight. One is, on Memorial Day, the Legion held the annual Memorial Day Parade in commemoration. I understand there was some humid and drizzly weather. However, there was a pretty good turnout. I unfortunately was out of state, but on behalf of the town, I did want to thank the Legion, both the sons and the auxiliary groups, Katie Sullivan and LHS Paid Forward, the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, and the high school and middle school staffs, and of course, all the volunteers from the town staff that made that happen. I attended, as, as some of you saw, the Ukrainian festival this weekend down on the town common. I saw some, some familiar faces, councillor Faber down there, and others enjoying what was happening. It was a beautiful day, great to see the common back in use in this 2024, what will soon be summer season, and, and more to come.
Now, we, we didn't charge them anything, right? Charitable organization?
Yep, that's correct.
And WMUR covered it.
WMUR covered it, I think another outlet or two covered it as well. And a lot of the, I think all of the, all of the, the benefit went for relief in Ukraine, is what I saw.
Wonderful.
So.
And as long as people want to use our outside facilities for charitable things, we're very generous with that, as long as they abide by our rules.
That's exactly right. And actually, I mean, on that topic, I, I parked across the street. I, I, when I was leaving, I happened to see someone at the Lions yard sale, or, yeah, the yard sale. And so I went over and said hello. It looks like they've got a nice quantity of stuff that's there, and my understanding is that that will be taking place next weekend.
I'm pretty sure the Lions built that pavilion.
Lions built that pavilion as well. Exactly right. So it was nice to see that in use again in 2024. Aaron, the library director couldn't be here this evening, but I, I saw, I'm an animal lover too. I particularly like birds, and something that caught my eye was the falconry demonstration that took place at Laffa last Thursday. There was nine, 95 people over there. I unfortunately was not able to attend. But there was a great horned owl and a Harris's hawk, and some children even got to hold the hawk, which I thought was pretty cool. More great content to come this summer. We've got a summer reading program over there at the library that I understand is already underway, and that there were some prizes as well. So I don't know what those prizes are, but I'd encourage everyone to go over to the library and check that out. I was reminded recently that it's about time that we start paying attention to the drought status. This was a, an annual tradition until recently, when it didn't stop raining all summer. And, you know, we do have a drought ordinance that the council can enact if, if needed. Currently, there's no drought in Rocky M County. We're in pretty good shape entering June, but always a good idea to conserve and just keep an eye on it as the days get warmer.
This weekend, we're supposed to get, next five or seven days, supposed to get rain.
I'll, I'll report back on it for my next drought update.
Glad I'm leaving town tomorrow. Enjoy.
Please continue.
The old, old home day planning is in full swing. As everybody knows, this is a collaboration of a lot of different community stakeholders and partners. 125 years this addition. And we are just thrilled to announce that the blast from the past is the theme that we're going with this year, honoring those 125 years of celebrations that have occurred here in Londonderry. We've got some exciting new events. But one I'd like to highlight in particular is we've added a dedication down at the Valley Cemetery. It's going to be led by the Sons of the American Revolution, and that will honor and mark the graves of Revolutionary War veterans who were interred there. So that's, that's a great addition, and it'll occur at 4:30 on Saturday, after booths on the common and just before the booth scoot and boogie. That's a special event that I hope everyone will attend. I wanted to report back on the playground project. Again, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, for your leadership on that and for highlighting that need that existed in the community. We've had a great outpouring of support for that and working on ordering a significant quantity of, of wood chip and getting a volunteer day together to get it spread out. It looks like that is, is hopefully going to come together. It'll all depend on, you know, who, who shows up, but I understand that the council is, is, have all volunteered. I understand that Ann Champa has volunteered her, her wheelbarrow, and I intend to be there as well. I haven't been working out as much as I, as I used to, but, you know, in terms of brute strength, you can rest assured that I will be there, and nobody needs to worry.
Do we have an approximate date?
What do we have?
Right now, we're tentatively looking at the weekend of July 13, 14, but we have not confirmed it yet. This is based on the delivery schedule, the most companies.
I heard over 55 was excluded.
You, you can direct it from the shade, you can direct the operation.
I'd be happy to like, point where the hose should come from the truck that I believe should be spreading.
Please just make sure the council receives an email when that's notified.
By all means. The, this is in Kelly's department, the, she's going to be talking, and the regional planner is going to be talking about the master plan, I believe, this week at the planning board. Wednesday. This is, you know, a lot of work has, has gone into this, just to, to get it to the point of, you know, we're not just talking about it, we're actually moving forward with a plan. And so we're excited to roll that out under Kelly's leadership and in cooperation with the regional planner. I, I think it's going to be a great update, and we can see not only what has occurred in terms of the 2013 master plan, but what needs to change and what the new goals are. So that's pretty exciting. Two last items, Mr. Chair, I, every year we get sort of an audit, if you will, performed by DRA of our assessing, our assessing entries, and it is delivered to us, it's delivered to the town council. And I'm happy to report that for the past year, the audit, which is of course not every property in town, but they spot check properties randomly, revealed no errors. So that is a, a particular testament to our assessing department, and in particular Laura Keely, who does most of the measurement out in the community. So my thanks to her and to that department. And then lastly, some of you probably were aware, the Aviation Museum, which is just a great Londonderry institution, held its annual rail trail run walk earlier in the month. And I got a card from the director, Jeff Rapsis shortly thereafter. He said it was a great success, record turnout, no issues, and best of all, the museum raised $4,000 for youth aviation education programs. We could not have done it without assistance from you and everyone in our local town government. Thank you. So my thanks to the council and the community for supporting the Aviation Museum, and that's all I have this evening, Mr. Chairman.
When did that walk happen?
I believe it was, I, I can't say exactly, but it was, I should say, earlier last month. He wrote me the card in May, so it was sometime in May.
And to note, Londonderry girls softball won on the weekend, the boys' baseball won on the weekend. They're both in the semifinals. I'm not sure where the boys' volleyball was at yet, but they were leading the state, so I'm not sure where theirs is. The boys are playing Wednesday night at Holman Stadium in Nashua. If you haven't been to Holman Stadium, they're playing at 4 o'clock on Wednesday. If you haven't been to Holman Stadium, it's worth going to. The girls are playing Pinkerton in Plymouth, so if you're interested in a long drive.
Plymouth?
For whatever reason, the tournament's up in Plymouth, and their championship is in Plymouth as well. If the boys are victorious on, on Wednesday, they will play on Saturday at Delta Dental Stadium. Against the winner of the Pinkerton-Nashua North game. So if, if it happens to be Pinkerton, it will be a rematch of last year.
Do you know what time that game might be?
The one on Saturday, they haven't made the announcements. Because all, all four divisions play that day, so they haven't made the announcements in those days. You go up to the game up there, it's a, it's a great event. You can, you can have dinner at the Hilton and then walk over to the game. It's, it's really, it's really a nice venue. And Holman Stadium is, you know, very historic. It was where, you know, where Don Newcombe and Jackie Robinson and all them played back in the 15, 40s, actually. It's, it's a place worth going to. And from what I understand, the boys' volleyball is killing it. So I mean, I haven't heard when they're playing again, but they are supposed to be superb.
Thank you. Assistant town managers report.
None this evening, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. All right, folks, next meeting is June 17th, here in the council chambers at 7:00 PM. And with that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Motion from Ted and a second from Ron, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes in affirmative, we are adjourned. Good evening.